But the tax.
But the assessed valuation will go up, and that's what your tax rate is based on.
Wouldn't that also kind of rejuggle, though? I mean, let's say that, and let's be perfectly honest, regardless of there not being a lot of studies because it's newer, that the taxing jurisdictions, if property value does go down in our area, the Butler municipality would stand to get less money. We may not go down in assessed value, but we could possibly get less. So we're juggling our taxes.
I would have to think about how you're stating that question, but.
And I don't need you to answer everything right now.
Our assessed valuation for taxing for next year has gone up dramatically. It's gone up 11%. It's never gone up in those double digits before. So that will bring your tax rate down. So you will essentially pay less.
And that's the research we'll definitely be doing.
That's the hopeful, Mark.
But that's what I meant by economic study, like, how does this affect us?
The only thing you have to consider is you've got country moving, and we're going to be drug along kicking and screaming in not allowing gasoline engines, not allowing coal-fired generation of electricity. Somehow, this electricity has got to be generated. And these solar fields are going to go somewhere. So that's just the bottom line. It's going to happen. And I told you that two places to look at right now are Randolph County and White County. Those are the two primary examples in our area. Now, I've heard some issues with it would be better to go back to doing windmills because windmills only take one acre per windmill. So you have 500 windmills, you've only got 500 acres. These, it takes eight acres to generate one megawatt. So you're taking up more acreage. So maybe we should go back and look at windmills. So. You know, but it's, the power's got to get generated somewhere. And those are all things that we have to look at on both sides.
Maybe we should look at what's best for the county and the people of the county and fits best with what we've said our county land should be used for inside the comprehensive plan and inside the unified development ordinance.
We have to live with Allen County. We have to live with Ohio. We have to live with the rest of the world. So, you know, and it's, it is a standard. Unfortunately, it's always not in my backyard. It's always the NIMBY question, not in my backyard. Do it anywhere else, just don't do it here. Those are all things that we have to look at. Now, I'm going to cut you off here because we're past. So, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you again. Appreciate it, council members.
I think you've already asked for time for next month.
I did, I did. We'll be back. I appreciate it.
I have a request. I have two requests. One, I need everybody to sign that sign-in sheet so I know who all's here. Are all of you that are here in the same group of the solerness? So, so Ken, this is, this is my reasoning for doing this. I have gotten a lot of emails. My request, and I hope you all understand, is if you can have one point of contact, reach out to me. You're going to get much faster response from me that when I have to do the research and find out what you're wanting versus if I have five of you emailing me asking the same question in five different ways. So if we can have at least one contact to contact myself, it's going to help you get the information faster. That's my only request.
And I did get, I did get an email last night or this morning that I responded to that I gave them my phone number. I'll be more than happy to talk to somebody on the phone. I prefer not doing it that way. If they would like to meet me for coffee over at Ninth Street sometime, I've made myself available for that. So.
I also appreciate that. Some of the emails I'm getting from them comes up as, you're not open. Have you had that issue?
Not yet.
Hey, this is from outside. All outside emails.
Well, this is.
They always send these those test emails to trick us.
Yeah. Believe me, I failed those a couple of times.
That's what you guys are getting.
Would it be better with emails if we tried to do the same subject or something so that you guys always know that it comes from or for that subject?
Is Ryan here?
Ryan is not here. He's working today.
Okay, come here. I'll show you what I've got. This is one he sent me email the other day. See that come up like that?
Oh, yeah. Be careful with this message.
Yeah.
I've not had one of those, so.
What we'll do is we'll, we'll just put something like basically in the subject, please include solar abatement questions or something of that nature. That way, you know it's always about that.
Okay. Andrew, why don't you take that clipboard? I don't know who's signed it and who hasn't, but pass it around through so you don't all have to get up to the counter.
Thank you.
I know she's here for something else, so. All right.
Was that the sculping at the Butler Library? That was last week. I haven't seen any besides that. That was the Lasa or BP Light source, and that was at the winery, and that was canceled. But maybe they've rescheduled, so.
No.
Thank you. Give me a minute to regroup here and.
None of them like that. The yell shows up. And just kind of, we got three, four. It could be.
All right, Susan, I've got.
I just usually just delete them before I even open them up. By chance, I would.
I'm looking for eight, but.
You're not going to find it.
It's not there.
We're up to the.
That's, oh, that's over here.
A discussion on salary longevity.
All right, so we're going to move on to that one because what's this one down here?
That is.
Okay, all right. So this is discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, good enough. All right, moving on here. We have a couple of issues that we need to discuss as far as the wage and hour ordinance for next year. We have a number of individuals, and we talked to some people from Soil and Water last month on, you know, based on the WIS study and what their raise was or was not going to be, and then the cost of the insurance that they were going to, in this one case, this person was going to net out at $152 less than what she was making this year. And we had talked about addressing that. One of the issues that we used to address it was considering longevity pay. And the reason I would like to use longevity pay as a way to address it is because if we fix one, we're going to, it's going to cause cascading issues with other, other people. We have some that may not have lost money, but certainly aren't going to gain much. And I know that the HR committee did have a discussion about this when they met, and my understanding that they came to no, no conclusions. I would still like to consider as a way to handle this issue, and in your packet, you did have a list of those people that would be most affected by this issue. I would like to handle this issue myself by instituting longevity pay and starting that longevity pay at five years and go up in five-year increments up to 20. I did have Susan put together a spreadsheet as to what we, what that would mean as far as funding, and there are a couple of examples in there. Her first one starts with five years at 500, but then adds $100 every year up to 10 years. That's not what I was talking about. I was talking about if, and we'll just use it.
They won't have that.
They don't have that one.
They only have the ones that.
You just gave that one to me. Giving at five years, and this again, just an example, at five years, giving $500. So they would get $500 at five years, six years, seven years, eight years, nine years. At 10 years, they would get 1,000. And then 11, 12, 13, 14, they would get that 1,000. At 15, they would, they would go up to 1,500. And then at 20, at 20 years, it would go to 2,000 and stay there permanently. That would be the top. Now, it was kicked around whether or not to use five-year increments or three-year increments. Also, 500 was the example I was using. I would be, I would be willing to back that down to, say, 350. But I think that that will solve this issue. We stay with what our WIS study said is the appropriate wage for these particular jobs, but we use longevity as a way to make up for that difference. Because as Bob said at the last meeting, we cannot, we cannot adjust as fast as private industry can adjust. I mean, it's, we are fairly restricted. Now, the spreadsheet that I'm talking about that is, this is in their packet, right, is it would bring this down to 100, at $500 increments, it would, it would bring it down to 106,000 a year. Again, I am willing to knock that down to 350, and there's a couple of issues that we need to discuss. Would it include the elected officials? Would it include those officials that our salaries are mandated, such as probation? Or would it include people like the sheriff, who we have a contract on? Again, there are things that we would need to discuss, but I don't, we would not be taking a vote on any of this until next month. If, because if we can't come to a consensus today as to what to do, we'll have the month to think about it and come back with, and make those adjustments next month. So, I've talked enough.
I would need to know a consensus prior to meeting so I can have your.
Have it ready.
Have your items ready to sign with the manner you're wanting.
In the HR committee, there were some department heads that were there, and there was some conclusions made that instead of pay, they were more interested in doing additional days off that would not cost the county any additional monies. And they, those department heads that were there said that they liked that idea because they did not want to increase any kind of county expenses. And in addition, it gave them a little bit more freedom on, on how they could reward people for their longevity. I know that that doesn't solve this issue. That's a separate topic. So, just wanted to clarify that there were some conclusions that we came to in the HR committee meeting.
And also, I think that, Dottie, do you know if that department head meeting, if they talked about that? Because that was one of the.
There hasn't been a department head.
Since then?
Yeah.
They were going to talk about that topic.
It's on the agenda.
Not real big on longevity pay for elected officials. The reason is, I mean, as an elected official, you're guaranteed you're going to be around in four years. So that automatically gives you a bump. The person in the trenches is going to have the earliest evaluation. So, it'll take a lot of convincing.
And, but that's why I wanted to bring it up, because I would agree with you. We're here because we want to be here, and because we hung around longer. As an elected official, I don't think that's right. But we do have all these, you know, we have, and there are other things about, what about, you know, Susan would have hours or years of service to count as somebody before she got elected. But now that she's elected, it's, it's not going to be considered. I think that's.
I think the other, sorry.
And then I would say those, those salaries that were mandated to pay, like probation, judges, prosecutor, all of these have, have set figures of the public defender. All of these, you know, I would say they'd all be excluded from this.
Well, your sheriff, too, is based on what prosecutor get. Then, then your deputies are based on what your elected officials, your first deputy. So those all have to be excluded, too.
Well, don't forget, this is not, this is not going to be part of their salary. This is going to be an add-on.
A stifle.
A stifle.
So it wouldn't be part of the percentage.
Right.
So the first deputies would, should still be included in the longevity because it's not based off of, like, my pay.
It is.
Her base rate is, but her years of service is not.
I think the other thing that we discussed in the meeting was that with additional PTO days added, that that also was kind of a helpful as a longevity pay. Over half of the county officials at this point get 20 days of vacation time. So that's a month, roughly a month off on top of the holidays, plus 35-hour work weeks. And so a lot of our staff at this point are working right around, based on hours, nine and a half to 10 months out of the year. So it's hard for me to kind of look at adding an additional pay.
I wasn't at that meeting. I was actually on vacation. But personally, for my office, and I don't know what departments were, heads were there, we already have problems getting our days used on vacation, so increasing them wouldn't benefit my team at all anyways. The only way to counteract that would be is if then what the employees are allowed to carry over or what they end up getting paid out for if they leave is figured into that.
A nice longevity pay. If you get to, if you don't get to use those and you get to take the pay for them.
But you only can carry over 10.
Sure. But they pay out, right? Is that, did you say that they pay out?
No, 10. 10, you get.
And roll over.
Other, if you have 15, you lose five.
Okay.
So they never get paid out if you lose them. So like, my employees would lose.
So we're giving too much vacation time? Are we giving too much vacation time?
Not unless they're, no.
And you got to, you know.
It depends on the department.
Counter what you would get in, in private industry. You'd get more.
I have never worked for a company that got.
Well, you know, but see, we're not competing with a mom-and-pop shop. We're not even competing with, with so much of a local. We're competing with SDI. We're competing with Parkview. We're competing with Lutheran, and that's where we have to look at.
Do they work nine months out of the year? Do they work nine months, 10 months out of the year? Based on hours, a lot of our employees are working right around nine to 10 months out of the year.
They work that and more, and they get to carry, you know, instead of getting only to carry over 10, I would have been able to carry over up to 30. So, and, and, you know, that's, you earned it at this point, and you're getting it paid out 20 years later.
A different pay rate.
You know, and, and you see why we had to change, pass out a lot of money here or transfer a lot of money was because of people leaving and needing to, needing to reappropriate money because the departing employee has taken all the money out of that particular line item, and now we have to refill it. But we've, we've set that limit.
Hey, I got to take off.
Okay. All right, well, this will be a topic next month, and we are, you know, the other one I wanted to do while you were still here, and I'm sorry we didn't, but information that I've got on the wheel tax, because that will also be discussed next month. But it will not be, we have from, we have from now until September 1st of next year to make a decision on wheel tax. Okay.
The only other thing I would say about the meeting is I was very, very surprised that the three department heads that were there were interested in PTO and over top of money. That really shocked me. And so that's why I was taking a look at PTO, because that's why I said, well, let's have this brought up in the full department head meeting so it can be discussed amongst all department heads. Because some other people may be like Susan, where they're like, I can't do without my employees another day, you know.
Well, and I think you'd probably end up with that same issue in the sheriff's department, both in jail and in road officers, and so.
Can I request that when that department head meeting happens, that we get sent the minutes or whatever, the discussion on the, on that?
How soon is it going to happen, Dottie?
December 7.
Oh, so it's right when we meet.
And I will not be in attendance because I will be at newly elected officials training.
No, but that's, when do we meet? The following week?
Correct.
Our council meeting is?
Yeah, the 13th or so, about the 13th. So she's going to need that decision beforehand. Is there any way to reschedule that meeting, get it earlier?
I mean, I can have it that, even if I have it the night before, the majority of the consensus, I can do it. You guys just might not have it uploaded prior to then walking into the meeting.
I mean, I would like to do what the employees, what most incentivizes the employees to stay here and be loyal. And if they're saying that's PTO, then PTO, if they're saying that's money, then money. The majority of the employees, you know, whatever they want makes them feel good, like they're appreciated, and they want to, they want to continue to work here, let's, you know, try to.
And don't forget, though, Bob, the, the employee might have a completely different opinion than the department head.
Yeah, because the department head's more.
You're going to be talking to the department heads.
And the department heads are more, got to, got to figure out how to keep their, their department staff during that time. And some departments have a harder time.
You know, just for my mind, for my money, the way to go is that we, because it's going to address the issue that we have here, and it's going to affect everybody equally. And it's not favoring or disfavoring any one individual. That we go with five-year increments, and we top it, top it out at 20 years. Whether it's 500 or 350, not, I don't have issue with that. But at 500, it is about $106,000 a year. Now, there are people, there are, there are people to eliminate out of our list there, so it's probably going to get down below, and if we go to 350, it will get below 100.
The other thing that I will bring up as department head, elected official, is when you guys went to this WIS study, and we are trying to bridge the gap and get our positions up to where they need to be, then that kind of took away the differences of our own employees' years of service. Because prior to that, it used to be that we would request wages based on how many years our employees had been there and the amount of work they did and stuff like that. So, but because we are so under the level, then, you know, all of our people are getting paid what you guys will say they can get paid, but yet I have some employees, I have three employees at the same category, but one of them's been here like seven years longer than the other two. So the longevity would help fix that from what was, kind of went away with the study.
Bottom line is, you know, we do owe our constituents, our residents, we owe them, you know, we need to use their funds as best we can, but we also owe our employees. Our employees are our most important asset. And what we have been trying to do over the last few years is, is get very objective, get, try to build our, our employees up and reward them for those that are doing a good job and have been with us. So we have those competing. We have our constituents, and we have our employees, and we're going to have to find a balance to between those two. So with that being said, we'll move on to the next item. And Jen was, was John, John was coming at 10:30, right? Okay, well, we got five more minutes. So Randy Fox is the next item on the agenda, and I take it Randy's not going to be here. His, his report is included in your packet.
I, he said he would be here, but I, I don't know.
Well, I know that he's been having issues with his own health and then with his, I think with his mother.
Right. So, yes, so I have included his updates.
And I, unless anybody's got any questions. You have their report. Mike, do you have anything in particular to discuss?
Well, I already talked about the, the ARPA plan for the December meeting. We should have hard numbers on the Highway Department bill sometime later this week or maybe next week, so we'll be able to present those at the December meeting. And hopefully, a couple of finance options that are in the, in the works right now, too. So, I think that's it.
We'll be anticipating that. Okay, we are ready for the Pokibosh Trail. Jen, do you want to say anything before I read this resolution?
No, just that John Bomberger and myself are here to answer any questions, should you have them. And if there's any information that you'd like afterwards, please let us know or contact Rick or Commissioner Watson. They've been part of our coalition as well. So, thank you.
All right. Resolution 2022-RCC-10, DeKalb County, Indiana County Council approving a form of inter-local agreement pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-4A for the Pokibosh Connector Trail. Whereas the Pokibosh Regional Trail Coalition was formed by local governments in northeast Indiana to explore the most effective way to complete the Pokibosh Connector Trail from Obache State Park north to Pocagans State Park through Wells County, Allen County, DeKalb County, and Steben County and cities and towns within each county. And whereas the vision of the coalition is the completion of the Pokibosh Connector Trail as a point-to-point uninterrupted trail through the heart of the region, improving northeast Indiana residents' health and wellness, spurring economic development along the course of the trail, improving access to the natural environment and attracting tourism and to the region. And whereas the mission of the coalition shall be to support the completion of the regional trail project by fostering equitable collaboration, coordination, and cooperation between the public and private sectors in northeast Indiana. And whereas the coalition has found that despite the tremendous efforts of the local governments and advocacy groups, the completion of the Pokibosh Trail Connector would greatly benefit from the establishment of a coordinating task force made up of representatives of each participating government entity to coordinate the efforts of local governments seeking, seeking the completion of, of construction of the point-to-point trail. And whereas the coalition has determined that establishment of a task force through the interlocal cooperation provisions of Indiana.
Sorry about that.
Of Indiana Code 36, you know, I knew that people wanted me to quit reading at one point.
You're on, right.
Indiana Code 36-7-1 through 36-1-7-17 will benefit the efforts of each of the local governments participating in the completion of the point-to-point trail. And whereas the coalition was, has recommended to each participating entity, the interlocal agreement for the Pokibosh Connector Trail pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-1 through 36-1-7-17. Pokibash Connector Trail pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-1 through 36-1-7-17. And whereas a copy of the interlocal agreement is attached hereto as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. And whereas the DeKalb County Commissioners have agreed to participate in the interlocal agreement for the Pokibash Connector Trail, approved the form of the local, interlocal agreement attached to this resolution as Exhibit A, and have authorized the execution of the interlocal agreement for the Pokibash Connector Trail, all pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-1 through 36-1-7-17, subject to approval by the council and subject to the approval of an agreement of the other participants. Whereas DeKalb County Council, as the fiscal body of DeKalb County, desires to approve the interlocal agreement pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-4A, subject to final approval by council and subject to the approval and agreement of other participants, now therefore be resolved by the DeKalb County Council as follows. One, the Pokibash Connector Trail will, as and when it is completed, result in the enhancement of the Northeast Indiana region by supporting the region's health and wellness, spurring economic growth, improving access to the natural environment, and attracting additional tourism. Two, the form of the interlocal agreement for the Pokibash Connector Trail is hereby approved pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-4A, as presented to this meeting and attached to this resolution as Exhibit A, subject to approval by council and subject also to approval and agreement of the other participants. Three, this resolution shall remain in full force and effect from and after date hereof, adopted at this meeting the DeKalb County Council held on November 8, 2022. I have a motion to approve this resolution.
I move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilman Kraft. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Dembski. All right. Jen or John, either one, any comments? The, I think one of the reasons that it was coming to us was the fact that the commissioners have already approved this, but the council, as the fiscal agent, needs to approve it in order to have it finalized here without going to the Attorney General. If we don't approve it, it has to go to the Attorney General for, for his approval of this. Well, joining this interlocal agreement. And is there a better explanation than that, John? John is actually the person that actually wrote this for us, so.
John, could you come up to the podium? Pursuant to the statute, we've asked that, that each participating entity approve the form of the interlocal agreement and approve the form subject to approval by their legal counsel and subject to everyone else, you know, participating in the agreement, which is the whole idea. The statute itself was developed, or excuse me, the interlocal agreement was developed as a result of the Pokabashi Coalition. That was an informal coalition that was formed to try and get the Pokabashi Trail completed from its current state to its completed state as a point-to-point regional trail. And this regional trail has been on the books for almost 20 years as a planned trail in Northeast Indiana. And much of it, a lot of it, has been completed. But we're trying to get it completed from point to point so that it is complete from Wells County to, to Steben County. And when we were looking for the, the best vehicle to accomplish this, to coordinate all of the governmental entities that are involved all the way up and down the trail, we looked at 36-1-7-1 in the Indiana statutes, which is the statute for interlocal cooperation. It is the statute that's used quite often for public utilities or, and other public projects that cross jurisdictional boundaries. So from that standpoint, that's what this document does. It allows for all of the communities up and down the trail to coordinate their efforts to complete, to complete the trail. So when we say finalize, we mean that the, all of the council from the various jurisdictions along the trail that are participants have reviewed and approved, and all of the other participants have agreed to participate. And then from that point forward, the, the task force will be formed, they'll develop a budget, you all will get to approve that, you know, and, and everything will move forward from there. Does that answer your question? We'd be happy to share that with you. We just completed and had a, a press conference involving the economic development research that we've done. And Jen, do you want to describe that?
Sure. Yeah. And actually, I'll kind of skip forward here to that portion. So we did commission an economic impact study. So that's what you read in the paper there where we revealed the results of that. We partnered with the Purdue Fort Wayne School of Economics for some of the preliminary work, but hired the Community Research Institute down there to consult with on, on that economic impact study. And you can see the job supported and the economic impact on an annual basis of this regional facility. And then some of the one-time impacts of the trail segments that have already been constructed and the ones that are planned to be constructed in the future. So we do have this available on NERC's website. They have that posted, the executive summary introduction, as well as the full report. And it is, we did a regional perspective and then also broke it down county by county. So you will see specific numbers for DeKalb County in that full report.
I have a quick question. So is the interlocal agreement a good, is that the vehicle we need to be able to? I'm done. Is that what we need to access, some of the federal funds and everything that we grant monies and so forth that we can get? Because it's going to kind of spread it across.
Yeah, there are various, you know, really strengths of the interlocal agreement. That's one, you know, is to be able to have an organization that can go to corporate foundations, federal grants, and even the state as a Northeast Indiana entity that can promote the point-to-point trail, as opposed to individual municipalities and county governments trying to approach those for their portion of it. Now we can approach those entities, you know, saying, look, this is what we're creating. It's this longer point-to-point trail, very similar to the one that they're building or plan to build very shortly from Chicago through Indiana to Southwest Michigan. And that's already been, you know, they've, they've been able to attract a lot of federal and state funding for that. And that's what we would, would propose to do here.
My second question is, Don, have you reviewed this? Okay.
This has already been passed by all four counties commissioners, Belufton, Auburn, Oscean, Waterloo, Angola.
Yes, we have 11 local units of government that are participating in this. I believe Auburn has its second reading, if I recall correctly, at their upcoming meeting. So they were one of the last ones that we were able to get scheduled. So we started our tour, if you will, in July and presenting to each of the local units of government on this opportunity for collaboration. So we have had the resolution passed on the executive side from all of the local units of government. And then now for the fiscal side, on the county, county level, because on the city and town level, it's the same board that, that pursues that.
And this agreement is not a financial commitment.
No, there is no financial commitment to this.
Our tax.
We, we, well, number one, number one, we have run the numbers of estimates as to what it's going to cost to construct those pieces. Parts of this are already done. The, through Auburn and the Auburn-Waterloo Trail, that would be part of this. The undone, the uncompleted portions run from the South County line to Auburn or from Waterloo north to Steben County. Those, you know, we have, we have the estimates. It's not committing any tax money to anything. It will be asking for grants, I'm sure. But it will be, none of this is, we're not giving the assignment of this trail in DeKalb County over to this group. The DeKalb County, Auburn, Waterloo is going to be responsible for their own areas. Well, and that's what, that's the, the economic impact study that Jennifer was talking about earlier. Well, the, I think the numbers, if, if you want to look at something similar, and John said, you know, talked about the Illinois and the, and the Michigan, but I think you need to look at the Cardinal Trail that currently runs from Marion to Richmond. It is the longest trail in Indiana right now. The, the Nickel Plate Trail that runs from Rochester down to Kokomo, or the Hand Handle Pathway that runs from Winnemac down to Logan'sport, or the Monon Trail, any of these. And they're administered in a number of different ways. Cardinal Trail is totally private. That is a not-for-profit corporation that manages that entire trail system. In the other areas, I believe that, hey, the Fish Line Trail over in Noble County and Alcart County has some, some places it's run by the city and other places, it's, it's got a private group, but it's done in many different fashions, not all the same. Actually, that's not been decided. It's not been decided. The, and that we have that corporation that possibly could do that. In, in the Auburn-Waterloo Trail, they have a not-for-profit that has coordinated all of those efforts. But in several of the cities, the park departments have taken it off.
There was a specifically coalition rather than change the current status of the trail, kept the jurisdiction with the local authority. So in other words, throughout the trail, as it presently stands, a lot of it is already done. It's already with Allen County, Fort Wayne, DeKalb, et cetera, et cetera. And the task of trying to convey that all to some private entity that's unfunded, sort of led us to the, to the conclusion that just leave it where it is, allow the local jurisdictions to have control and authority over the trail, but just use this, this entity as a way to coordinate a future completion of the trail, not compelling completion of the trail. So it does, it does not impose on anyone an additional obligation. It allows a vehicle for the trail to be completed should we have, or should we find the money, get it. It's going to be, well, it's, yeah. I mean, that's, that's what the. Right, right.
So we've, we had, as the Pokibash Coalition, we wrote letters of support for the next level trail grants for the local units of government that applied. And three of those local unit of governments, with Auburn-Waterloo Trail being one of those projects, were funded because it's part of a larger regional impact. And that's a lot of these grant opportunities are looking at that large regional impact. So as you come together and have that vision and that establishment, it helps propel those, those applications higher on the list.
What other advantage, you know, if, as you've watched over time, how the state government especially has provided dollars to the various regions in the state. For example, the regional cities program, now Ready Program, they have always required regional coordination as part of applications to access those. So this type of an entity will be a step up for Northeast Indiana, at least with regard to funding trail projects. You know, Northeast Indiana will be able to respond in a much more coordinated to the availability of those funds. Same thing with trail funds from the department. So it's, 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 it's more of a function of coordination, being able to have some agility when, when monies are.
Yeah, they've been one of the members of our coalition.
E and R has been involved.
And.
A large coalition. And that's, in many of these grants, as already been said by these two, many of these grants look at what kind of cooperation do you have amongst the different units? The fact that we've got four counties and seven cities working together is a positive for our grant applications and funding of this trail. Because this is a big part of economic development. Again, it was brought up at the Economic Development Conference again last week in that we, we don't have a beach, we don't have mountains, we don't have those kinds of things that would attract people. We have to build those things. People are in fact looking for where they want to live that has the amenities that they want, and then they're looking for jobs. Kind of the backwards as to what it was always 20 or 30 years ago. That's what young people are doing. So we are trying to build that attraction, build those amenities. Plus, you go in and you look at the health of Indiana, and we are in, down in the 40s, if not 50th, in, in our health. And having things like this would help improve our health. I mean, walking, riding. I ride a lot of these trails. I see a lot of not only bike riders, but also inline skaters, mothers pushing baby carts, older people on, on recumbent bikes. You see a lot of activity. And it will help improve our health. That's something that we're going to be looking at for 2023 with the, the Governor's Health Commission. These are all big issues that we need to address.
On top of that, the, you know, the economic development study does demonstrate the economic. both. They, they go dirty, dirty. Economic. Cost. Outweigh. So, you know, that, with. Thought, they really run favor.
Yeah, that study will show that, you know, the public investment and what it yields and the private investment that would come in as far as the visitor spending. That was one of the, the big, I guess, revelations of the study is showing how these public dollars can be leveraged to increase the private participation.
Any questions?
Where will that come up from Allen County?
The, I believe that Allen County, and Jen, you probably are more familiar with the exact what's happening, but I believe they were going to open up bids sometime within the last month or two, and it's going to hit DeKalb County at County Road 9A, north of Huntertown. They're getting ready to finish that portion from Union Chapel Road up to through Huntertown at our county.
And you can see up here, it's a, a large representation, but the, it's a little bit hard to see. So the yellow trunk line going north and south, that's the Pokabash Trail. So that's the regional trail that we're focused on currently, which when completed would be about 81 miles in length and would be the longest continuous trail in the state of Indiana, which would be very good for our region. But then you can see that's, that's not the only impact. I mean, there'd be other connector trails in the 12-county Northeast Indiana region that we could all work together to, to create a nice network of opportunities for our residents and visitors to the area. Because we have the Pumpkin Vine Trail up in LaGrange County that goes east and west that could connect in to this regional corridor. So kind of think of it like this is the, the interstate of the trail system that we're looking, so that we can really get that broad connectivity, so there's other opportunities locally to advance on that.
Okay, we have been meeting, DeKalb County, Steben County, LaGrange, Noble, and Elkhart County have been meeting with doing something with the Fish Line Trail and the Pumpkin Vine. That is a totally separate group, but we have made, we have made it well-known, especially to Garrett and to the St. Joe area, that it is most important that we get the spine done first before we start branching off to all these other areas. That, that 81 mile is done, and then we can branch off of it in many different places.
I'm not aware of that.
No, I don't have that number.
Any other questions? Motion and a second. Resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Is that, oh, Donna did come back.
Yeah.
All right, five to one, so it has passed. Jen, John, thank you very much for coming. We need to get John back to Fort Wayne real quick. You're welcome. Thank you very much for both coming. All right, we have. We have a couple more things that we do need to go through, but I'm going to say let's take two or five minutes. Bob's already left to the restroom, so let's take five minutes and break and come back.
Okay. Okay, do you want to, do you want it signed or do you just want it emailed? Okay, I'll email them to you. I do. Yep, thank you.
Hey, where are we headed? Aren't you leaving right after this? We're going to be there for a week. Word, 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 word. You know, as long as I can be outside, I don't care what kind of weather. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Did you eat that? Did you eat that?
All right, now, is this the only copy, Susan?
No, I have a good one going around.
Oh, do you? Okay.
Yeah. That actually was yours. Do you not want it?
No, I've got it on.
Okay, get rid of that.
Okay.
We don't need one in there, we'll scan it. Just get rid of it.
Next item of business, we'll call the meeting back, we'll call the meeting back to order. Next item of business is the DeKalb County Visitors Bureau budget approval.
Turn your mic back on, please.
See a blue light, is that good?
Yep.
Okay, well, I just wanted to give you guys some handouts and give you a heads up. I like to kind of show you what we've been up to. It's been a big year for us. It's been really good from a, a larger branding standpoint. And so this, I guess we'll, we'll look at the budget first. So we have been pretty passive the last couple of years, just with employee switches and obviously we're running on a COVID budget. Inkeeper's tax, we do so well because of our corporate. And so this year, we did want to definitely be a little bit more aggressive because we have a pretty good market share right now, and we want to be aggressive in what we're doing with that, putting more in advertising, putting more in my travel budget. We would like to pick up a part-time data analysis. So right now in marketing, obviously, like content capture is key. So we've hired a creative director who's taking amazing pictures, video, and we've been able to do that for a lot of kind of smaller nonprofit entities. We did a lot with the corn maze, and that's Indiana's largest corn maze, so that really helped them out this year. And I can kind of, you know, give Larry a call and say, hey, how's that working for you? And he's really thrilled with what we've been doing. So we obviously remain to be car-heavy because that's our biggest brand throughout the state, through the region, and protecting that brand is really big for us from an advertising standpoint. So I will say that, I don't know if you guys have seen Indiana's new branding, it's just kind of the "in Indiana." So what we've done with that is like we've done campaigns like Duesenberg's in Indiana that kind of talk about, you know, what our branding staple is, bringing it back here. Another really important thing is I've taken over as president of East Region Tourism, so now I'm in charge of the marketing co-op for the 26 counties on the side of the state. So we've rebranded along with the State of Indiana as well, East Region Tourism in Indiana. So what that's going to enable us to do is once again use myself and my marketing director to basically not only build like car trails like we have been, but obviously help our Pokabash bike trails. We can do waterway trails, agritourism trails, winery trails, coffee trails. So anything basically we want to do, we have the means in-house to basically build the, the graphics, the logo, the pictures, video. We bought a drone, we've been putting that to, we've been putting that to use. So it's just about that content capture and that connectivity. So you said, we really want to be aggressive with our budget this year, but definitely stay within our means and be good stewards of that. I've been traveling a lot, it's making a difference. We have Back to the Bricks making a stop here on their way to Detroit this next year. We have two teams in the Great Race that's going to, help me out, Dave, they're going to go from. There you go. And so with our Indy 500 Parade sponsorship this year, we're going to have a Duesenberg go through, the Futureliner go through, and both boys will take the race teams with that. So from a branding standpoint, we're just out there kind of doing what we do. Keep it short and sweet. I know you guys are busy. Do you guys have any questions?
And I don't, it really isn't a council issue, I guess, but I did hear in the commissioners' meeting yesterday, as I was listening, is there still issue with some of our hotels not paying their income keepers tax?
There is.
Is that, is that one? Is that half of them?
Three hotels in particular are probably about 10 months delinquent, and it kind of keeps perpetuating itself. So my grounds, I really don't, can't do anything about it, I can't address them directly. What I've been able to do, to do for McCanna is basically given him an updated list of contact points, who the general manager is. Some of these hotels don't even have general managers, they haven't retired since then. There's a lot of turnover, so it's kind of hard to get to the decision maker. But I've kind of given him an updated list of who to contact, the most direct, and hopefully we can start to get some steam. They, the paperwork is in.
We hope so.
I was going to say, the paperwork is, I mean, they've turned the paperwork in, they're simply not paying.
Yes. So we, we've, we've sent the McCanna Collection Agency to visit them yesterday. Well, and, and the big hammer behind that is that we can get their retail merchant certificate pulled for that, so that's the next step that Jim's going to do.
So it's usually, I, I send a, actually, I send Teresa Collins, I'll send her a note that basically says I would like to send my inkeeper's tax request form, and so it's usually like two months in the rear. So I'll send it out, and then they'll collect that back once, and then I'll get the next month, like, so it's like two months behind of when they actually collected it to when I get it put into our. So like I said, it's per my hotel reporting, it's been collected from different hotels for like, so, and this has been, I mean, I have an email trail of just like, oh, hey, we're behind, is there anything I can do? Is there anything, you know, kind of, so I just think that we should probably stop being so nice, and hopefully McCanna will say like, okay, time to pay up. And I, my hands are kind of tied from that standpoint, so. I believe two of them are. And I will say the Country Inn in Suites Radisson, they do have a, a new owners that I did talk to, because I'll check in with the hotels about every three months because there is such turnover. Hi, who's your general manager? Who should I be speaking to? Who does your marketing? That way we can kind of make sure we have the correct logos and whatnot. And she did say, you know, I've turned in my paperwork, we're good to go, but then, of course, we still have to see.
I will say that, moving on from that topic, I have seen a lot more coming from the state as far as tourism in Indiana, and I'm assuming that, you know, because I've seen a number of things from, from DeKalb County in that, in those emails and those flyers. in that, in those emails, in those flyers, and...
We really are pushing the lead on that. And so the good thing is, is that with every, they're called activations. With every activation, it gets put in a binder that gets put on the governor's desk every two weeks. So every activation that we've done is put in a binder. We've really been able to kind of take the lead and help them with those activations because the main goal for Indiana is, from a tourism standpoint, we're running on an under $5 million budget for the complete state of Indiana, right? And then you look at the Pure Michigan campaign, that's like $40 million. Kentucky has passed legislation to where I think it's $27 million for the next three years. Ohio, Illinois. So out of all the surrounding states, we have the lowest tourism budget. So that's really the goal, is to provide enough support to back up legislation so we can actually get a bigger tourism budget. That way, we can promote what we already have. Because if you're not telling your story, you look like everybody else. So we're doing our best. The NASCAR. Catch me if you can.
That's good to know. All right, now officially, do we need to approve this by a vote? Or is this just information only for us?
For our bylaws, it's not a vote. It's basically just to say, hey, this is what we're up to. Does that sound great? So, and always, texture of call away. You know, one other thing that we were able to do with budget this year, because we did have a little bit more intake than we were planning, we're able to turn around and let each board member basically put some kind of quality-of-place project together for each community, divide it evenly in between our eight communities. And it should probably be about $8,000. So Waterloo gets a surprise $8,000 to say, what do you want to do with that? Butler, Corona, we helped them install their first mural there on the fire station. Paid them a grant to kind of help make sure they bought the patroness. So what we're doing is making a difference.
One last thing, just point of information, as much for the council as for anybody here. But in some of the stuff that I've been reading and some of the groups I've been dealing with, one of the things that's going to come up in Indiana Legislature this year may be making the food and beverage tax statewide and not an individual decision by cities and towns and counties, but to make it statewide. So keep an eye on that because, you know, that, I think that actually drives some of our people from Fort Wayne to come up here and eat and whatnot because they don't have that tax. But anyway, all right, thank you very much, Amber. I appreciate it. Okay.
Is the nice copy of the trail ordinance going around? Girls, girls, girls. That's all right.
All right. Next, let me catch up here. We have an ordinance.
As you're getting it, just so everybody is aware, as he's reading this amendment for this year's salary ordinance is literally just putting in that Travis's new title, his account number, and that his pay stays the same. So it's a state board thing that we have to do so that it's in our minutes.
All right, so ordinance 2022-OCC-12, an ordinance amending the DeKalb County 2022 Salary and Hourly Wage Ordinance, DeKalb County Council. The DeKalb County Council hereby establishes the following salary and hourly wage ordinance to become effective for pay period 12/19/2021 to 1/1/2022, paid on 1/14/2022 through pay period 12/4/2022 to 12/17/2022, paid on 12/30/2022. It is further ordained that all salaries and wages shall be paid biweekly, 26 pays. It is further ordained that any employee hired after the date of this ordinance will have one pay period withheld for audit purposes. It is further ordained that the compensation of employees and elected officials may include, but not limited to, if provided and meets eligibility, a stipend, health insurance, health savings account, professional certifications, education advancements, and per diems regardless of the source of the funds for which the money is paid. Now therefore be it ordained by the DeKalb County Council that the salary and hourly wage ordinance for 2022 budget is hereby amended to include the reclassification listed and/or that the employee will be paid within the range represented from the federal minimum wage to a maximum of the dollar amount set forth on this ordinance unless amended. Veteran's services. Deputy VSO Office Manager, $25.08 per hour. WIS category set at PAT A. This category nor pay is different than when paid as a part-time deputy. This is just establishing the title of the full-time position with category and pay rate. I have a motion to approve ordinance 2022-OCC-12 on first reading. Moved by Councilman Kraft. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Prosser. Council discussion. Comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing this ordinance on first reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion is carried. Now, we need to suspend the rules to read this on second and third reading. Then moved that we suspend the rules. Is there a second? Second by Council, motion by Councilman Kraft. Second by Councilman Yard. Discussion. Hearing none on suspending the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion is carried. Ordinance 2022-OCC-12, an ordinance amending the DeKalb County 2022 Salary and Hourly Wage Ordinance, DeKalb County Council. I have a motion to approve this ordinance on second and third reading. Then moved by Councilwoman Prosser for second and third readings. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman King. Discussion. Comment from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 2022-OCC-12 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion is carried. All right. Let's do, let's do the transfer to the Rainy Day Fund first before we go into these other things. All right, resolution number 2022-RCC-9. Resolution transferring funds from the County General Fund to the Rainy Day Fund. Whereas the DeKalb County Council adopted resolution number 2004-R-3, a resolution to establish a Rainy Day Fund pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-8-5.1 on March 1, 2004. And whereas Indiana statute allows the transfer of any obligated cash balance from the fiscal year at any time to the Rainy Day Fund. And whereas the DeKalb County Council would like to set aside monies for all legal purposes for which the County General Fund can be used. And whereas unobligated cash exists within the County General Fund, it is hereby resolved by the DeKalb County Council to transfer $375,000 from the County General Fund 1001 to the Rainy Day Fund 1186. All of which is resolved this 8th day of November 2022. Can I have a motion to approve resolution number 2022-RCC-9? Then moved by Councilwoman King. And a second by Councilwoman Dembski. Discussion. Comment from the public? Just so that everybody is clear, this is what was approved in this year's budget. This is not the amount that we approve for next year. So this is from this year's budget. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion is carried. All right. So that brings us back to some informational objects or documents that you have in your packet for today. This was brought up some time ago about the wheel tax. I think the initial conversation started because of the amount of unpaved or gravel roads that we have in the county. And you do have a list of how many of those roads are in each one of the townships. And just, and I redid it last night and just to look and see who was the most affected. And it's actually, the east side of the county is the part of the county that has the most gravel roads. Stafford County being number one. 57.66% of their roads are stone. Yeah? Stafford is that. Newville is 53.5%. Wilmington's 51.6%. Troy Township is 51.3%. And Franklin is 49.5%. And Concord is 46, 47%. So actually, that is pretty much the entire east side of the county has got the majority of the gravel roads. 39.9% of the roads in DeKalb County are gravel. So that's issue number one and what those residents in those areas were asking for. Issue number two comes from our current fiscal plan. If you look at that fiscal plan, which is on page 17 of the fiscal plan, and you have a copy of that particular page, you will see that in the year 2025, our highway department is underwater. Funding for the highway, funding for the highway department is coming through gas tax that is collected through the state then brought back to us. That is not, that is not any amount that we collect in property tax or anything like that. So at that point, and there are a number of factors as to why this is going down, the primary one being that that dollar amount is not increasing to us as fast as our employees and our costs are increasing. And with the money coming through the gas tax as we go to electric vehicles and everything else, that also reduces the amount of funding that the highway department gets. So that is something that we need to address. It is not something that has to be addressed this year, 2022, but we need to be prepared for 2025. So during the month, during the year of 2023, we want to take a look at this seriously as to what our options are. And I am not, I am not suggesting that we implement a wheel tax. I am just suggesting that we see that we're underwater. We need to look at, see what we can do. We can reduce expenses. We can reduce costs. Or we could do a wheel tax. And when it comes to a wheel tax, there are a number of options. And I have given you some additional information there. And if you... There is the vehicle wheel tax analysis that was done. This is information that's been brought to us from Jeff Peters, our financial consultant. Remember or know that if we do a wheel tax, a couple of things. There are two different groups here. Passenger cars is one group. And commercial vehicles, buses, large things is a whole different group. And you cannot do one without doing the other. You have to do both. We also, whatever we generate is going to be shared with our local cities and towns. So it is not, you're not going to implement it and bring it all back to us in total. That's not going to happen. And there is, in this study, there's a minimum tax that can be implemented. There is a maximum tax that can be implemented. And there is another column that shows maximum with AMP. And that AMP, if your county has passed an asset management plan, which we have, then that is our max. If we have an asset management plan. So our county does have that. So there's your, you know, your minimum, your maximum there. You can go, you can go to either end or anywhere in between. So determining what is that value, what is it that we actually need is going to be important. But anyway, these documents are for you as we continue with this discussion. The deadline, if we're going to implement such a thing for 2024, would be September 1 of 2023. If we chose not to implement it until '25, then the deadline would be September 1 of '24. So that's how much, that's the timeframe that we're looking at, that we have to work with. But you have the best information that I can help provide at this time to start the discussion. Well, most, we are one, 62 counties in the state have passed a wheel tax. We are the only one in this four-county area that does not have one. Now, Steben County, and Don, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that Steben County went to the max.
Pardon? Yes, Mike?
Just a little extra to consider when we're talking about roads and funding and so forth is that part of the required agreement with any of the solar developments that come in will be a road use agreement. At a minimum, that road use agreement will require that any roads used for the construction phase of the solar project, if they're currently gravel, will have to be shipped and sealed. Maybe depending on the road, maybe asphalted. And any asphalt road would have to be repaired and resurfaced. Given that most of the interest in solar is at the east, is at the east side of the county, I would anticipate that that will take care of a number of the gravel roads on the east side. So the wheel tax would certainly complement that from a maintenance standpoint, be able to maintain those roads. And I would, I would also anticipate probably economic development agreements. And there's a lot of moving parts and things that haven't been decided yet. But maybe in the neighborhood of $15 to $20 million that could also be funneled in to the road calculations too.
Isn't it, if the solar pieces go in, don't the solar developers have to either set aside money or fund? Because don't they have to pay to improve those roads for their usage? That's not a county expense upfront?
That is correct. Yeah, that's all on the solar developers. They have to, that's part of the road use agreement. that's part of the road use agreement with them. That's, there's, there's no county expense.
And, and when they're done then, wouldn't they have to bring them back to standard? I mean, they can't leave them rutted out even though they paid the money and proved it. Don't they have to improve them before they pull out, which would now be an expense for the county?
Yes, yes. That's absolutely correct, Dave. And, and again, and I've been talking to a lot of the other counties who already have solar and, and wind. They're requiring, as part of that agreement, if, if it started out as a gravel road, they have to repair all of the ruts and all of that, and then ship and seal that road at a minimum. If it's, if it's heavily traveled, I would think that in our agreement, we'll ask them to hard surface it. But at a minimum, those gravel roads will get chipped and sealed, as well as repaired. And, and any road that's currently asphalted would have to be repaired and resurfaced as before the, or as they finish the construction phase. Yes, Bob?
Is that just the section of road it takes them to get into that area, or is it? In the other counties, is it resulting in a lot of roads all the way around the project?
Yes, it's, it's.
Not just one little strip into it?
Exactly. And, and basically, that's whatever we negotiate with the developer. And I'm, I'm certainly inclined to say we're going to get a lot of roads resurfaced, not just that strip that they used to access, but, but in the area. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to just do a half-mile stretch or whatever. So, again, funding from the state is decreasing for a lot of reasons, so take care of a lot of the, the road situations in the east side. And then to have the wheel tax available to keep them, the maintenance up, it would be a real win for everybody. Well, yeah, we can, we have a pretty good grip on what it costs to chip and seal a mile or, or hard surface a mile, so, yeah.
One of the, one of the issues that the commissioners are going to have to deal with as they, as they negotiate these economic development agreements, which in the case of several of these counties have been in multiple millions of dollars that they would be paying, is it's a chicken and the egg thing. Because the, the amount of the economic development agreement is going to be somewhat predicated on how much tax abatement they get. No tax abatement, no economic development agreement. And, you know, it just, it's, yeah, so.
Well.
Yeah, they may have to still do something to the roads.
Yeah, the economic development agreement is, is separate from the road use agreement. For sure, and, and Rick's correct, the, the economic development payments are calculated somewhat on how the tax abatement is structured. For instance, Randolph County, who's had wind and solar for, for quite some time, about half the population of, of DeKalb County, over the abatement period for the utilities scale, wind and solar projects they have will collect about forty million dollars. But their tax abatements are a hundred percent for ten years. So, I'm, I'm sorry, sixty million dollars is what they're estimating. So if that tax abatement was a, was a ten-year phase-in, a hundred ninety, eighty, blah, 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 that would change the calculations for the, for the EDA payments.
That's one of the things that previously the council could not do. I mean, everything was pretty well fixed in six, eight, and ten-year increments, and you could give ten percent a year, twenty percent a year, whatever. Now we can manipulate the, the number of years, and you could give a hundred percent tax abatement for five years, and then fifty percent for the next five years. Before, you could not do any of that. So now it's, it's kind of what, whatever we come up with, whatever we decide, so. Which makes our job much more difficult. It's, yeah, because you're not, you can, you can come up with all kinds of different ways to, to do this. The other thing, and thank you, Mike, the other thing on this wheel tax question, and I've, I thought I'd made it very clear in the two times that I have been asked about it by the newspaper, that none of this consideration of a wheel tax is based on anything to do with the highway garage or that project. That if we were to pass a wheel tax, it must go by state law directly into the roads. You can't be buying equipment and building buildings and all this kind of stuff with it. It has to go into the roads. So that, we want to make sure is very clear to everyone.
Is that the same with local municipalities that get a piece of this, that it goes to their street?
It has to go to their streets.
Okay.
Same rules apply for everybody. So, but again, we'll be talking about this over the course of the next nine months. And sometime between now and September 1, we'll have to decide, do we want it for the next year? And if we say no, then it's going to come up again the following year. Again, we'll have time to, to deal with it and talk to people about it and consider it. Well, and I think, you know, initially, this came to us for consideration again because of the gravel road situation that was brought to the commissioners. You know, the fact that, that, you know, where this highway department's going to be in 2025, that was brought to us by Jeff Peters, our financial consultant. You know, we need to, we need to be thinking ahead. We need to be thinking about what are we going to do?
Wheel tax is a hundred percent on our resident, the tax, a hundred percent on our residents, those who own registered vehicles in DeKalb County, or the gas tax you collect from everybody, but we can't do anything with a gas tax. That's all through the state.
That's all through the state.
We can't add anything to that.
And you can see in that, in a couple of those examples that I provided you, it shows you how many vehicles of each type are registered in DeKalb County and what that, yeah.
And still, you have to register your vehicle in the county you reside in?
Yes. As far as I know. Now, Don, maybe I'm wrong. All right, the.
I have a question, Rick.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I don't know if you know or not, but is, is there, it seems like this road issue continues to be a problem, obviously, over the years because, I think you said sixty-two counties have passed the wheel tax. And you made the comment that there's a lot of different reasons down at the state house that this is proceeding, you know, that we're losing. Can you just kind of hit on a couple of them? And is there any kind of movement among our state representatives to say, hey, let's, let them cut the spending instead of the counties cutting the spending? I mean, what kind of movement down there is happening so that we don't have to keep considering this? The topic, we mentioned just a little bit ago, and the trail topic. NDOT, state of Indiana, some of those transportation companies are involved in the trails. Can't they stop that and give us some money for roads?
Well, and not only that, the road, and we do that.
Community crossings.
Community crossings. And I, Ben just told us yesterday in the commissioners meeting, he was ready to submit this year's grants, and that's what they've done. And we will get some of those. We're getting, we're getting a hell of a grant on the County Road 56 project.
We've gotten the community crossings for at least the last four years.
So, the, and this year, they will be doing, you know, it's a budget year in this, in the legislature, so they'll be looking at that, so.
Yeah, I didn't know if, you know, if there was a push down at the state house, and, and maybe that's something that our representatives, Ben Smoltz or Tyler Johnson, could, could start to push down there to say, look, it's not right that they continue to push these up to the counties. I think we've, we've heard it a lot here that.
These are our roads.
Yeah.
These are our roads.
Correct, but they give us the money to, correct, but they give us the money to fix some of them.
Ten years ago, eight years ago.
We're sending our tax dollars to the state, and then we have to beg for them back.
Eight years ago, it was, we, our roads were in deplorable positions. We, we had our NDOT people telling us that we need to generate more funds to replace bridges and roads and everything else. That's when the, that's when the changes to the gas tax were implemented a number of years ago. And we're, we're at the end of that life now, and it'll probably, it probably will have to be readdressed. But we also have to address issues about people and things like electric vehicles. You know, because they're not paying gas tax. How are we, you know, maybe the, those electric vehicles and buggies can pay the same amount, six fifty. All right, a couple of other things, because I see people trying to put their stuff away really fast, and I have, you know, I don't know that I apologize that this has been such a long meeting, but it, it, there's been a lot to do. Couple of issues that Susan and I have been talking about, I've brought back from the budgeting and finance education that AIC has been putting on. In your packets today, there are a couple, there is one item, and that is the lit percentages and the money that's been generated over the last, I think you used four years. And we're going to make sure that we're provided with that information about every quarter. So that we can see that, you know, that we have money coming in other than our property tax. This is, this is one. And we want to make sure that everybody is aware of it.
That's this one.
And then we also have the spreadsheet that Jan started a number of years ago, and Susan's continued with our, our funds and the projections of how our funds will end. We will be seeing that. We decided three times. What we decided, well, we'll get one, we'll get one, we'll get one for the end of the year, because we used, we used this spreadsheet to do the budget for, say, '22. We'll get this sheet for the end of '22 to see where we, did, did we hit, did we miss, whatnot? And then we'll, we'll update it again after the spring settlement. So after the May settlement, and then we'll get it again when we're doing the budget. But this will keep us aware of where we are financially.
So for instance, this one, it's not as big as what you see when we do budgets. So this one is the actual 2021 ending balances, which we had in 2021 when we were doing the 2022 budget. So over on the right side, you will see it's tiny, but for 2022, when you guys finished doing budget cuts and changes and everything, your target percentage for general fund was twenty-nine point four-four percent. With all of the actual, actual expenditures as of the 4th of November, actual receipts, which obviously does not include fall settlement, and I have actually figured in, I figured in all of the unused appropriations that everybody has. So that's if a hundred percent of our appropriations would be spent by the end of the year, then for general fund as of today, we are at thirty-seven point nine-six percent. As if everything is spent and not including fall settlement.
And remember, and Dave will remember, Bob might remember, Donna would if she was still here, so with Bill, we're in a much better financial position today than we were ten years ago because of how we've managed the funds.
Well, and I have that here.
And we want to continue that.
So on that side, I have that. So for the general fund, I have it listed going back to 2013. So ending in 2013, the general fund was only a four point four-nine percent. And the financial advisor, he advises thirty, thirty, thirty-three-ish, thirty percent is normally our benchmark. So I have that kind of listed going down. At the end of 2021, the actual, the target for '21 was thirty-six point seven-five. We actually ended at forty point eight-one. So I have those listed there so you can see how our general fund has increased. I don't have all the years listed for all of these little funds, but the general fund is the.
That's the big one.
The ticker that is watched.
That's the one that we got to be most careful with. But anyway.
Yeah.
So that is what good management has done. And it also shows, and I'm going to go back to what we talked about earlier, we do have the ability to reward our employees to work, to think about that longevity issue. We have the funds there. And we, you know, and we need to do, there are a lot of things that we need to do. You know, we, we need to keep our, our best and brightest staff. There are, there are ways where we can move on to non, you know, bringing in different computer equipment or different computer programming and things like that to take the place of some of our functions. But we need to maintain those, the, the best and the brightest that we've got. So, that being said, that's a last of my soapbox. Other, next thing on here, we've already talked about the status. Talk, look at the council meetings, and we, we won't actually approve this until next month, right? Next year's?
That's up to you.
Okay, I think we'll do it next month, because one of the changes that I would like to, to implement for 2023's budget sessions for 2024 is not do two full days in August. I think over the last few years, we've seen the repetitiveness of people coming in, yeah, the gas prices are up, the utility prices are up. Nothing, nothing really dramatic or special about what they're asking for, for the next year. So, you know, a lot of redundancy, and, and I don't see any point in, in keeping us here for two days and keeping them away from their jobs for that amount of time. So I would like to, they will still submit their budgets to Susan. We will get those and have a one full day meeting in August where we can review them. And anybody that would come in and present to us would be somebody who had a new program or a major expense that would be coming up in the next year, something special. Way, way high. Exactly. Exactly. So anyway, that would cut out, that would cut out a full day of meetings in August of next year. But I don't believe that we're going to have any less information, because we honestly don't do anything with what they present over those two days. Now, what I would expect is that those department heads talk to each one of their council liaisons to kind of go over things. And if you have something that you say, well, you know, the whole council ought to know, that's something special, direct them to, to come to us, and we can make time for that. So I'm not, I don't want to cut anybody off, but I also want to make better use of our time. And then the liaisons, well, and September meetings be essentially the same for September, because that's when we actually do start looking at cutting and whatnot. And then for council liaison appointments, we will make those next month for the following year. Of course, Donna will be, will not be here next year. Rick will be here with us. The easiest thing to do would be to just turn over all of Donna's things to Rick, but I, I don't.
And one each of all of ours. And one each of all of ours.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you know, the new, the new guy ought to work harder, shouldn't he? Well, and if you have, you know, there, he's already pointed out that, you know, it's probably not best that he has the auditor's office. So we'll, we'll give that to somebody else. But if you have departments that you would like to, not, I don't want to say surrender, but things that you don't have, you know, I know that Amy's got a big interest in the veterans office. She's certainly not going to want to give that up. You have the interest in the highway department or in Sunny Meadows. But if there's some that you wouldn't mind seeing switch, go ahead and do that. I will tell you that I'm having very, a lot of concern right now with the solid waste district. Whatever the issues are, I don't know, but Bill Van Wyk has chosen not to do the solid waste district in the future. Now that is a, whoever gets that assignment, those are meetings that you have to go to. There's some, there are some, there's a commissioner and a council person that are both appointed to that. And they need to have, and I don't know if you know, Don, there's a certain number of the commissioners or councils have to be, counties have to be represented in order to have an official meeting. Yeah. No, I think, I think Bill's probably reached his limit. So, so anyway, that's one that we'll have to talk about. And I'll probably reach out to several of you about, and, and giving something up so that you can take on that, on that position. So. No, they are not. They are not. All right. Is there anything else to come before the? No, I think that, anything else to come before the council?
He did. I had a constituent reach out this week, and he, with his kiddos, was at the local coffee shop. And his kids were asking why there was only one statue on the courthouse lawn and thought that there should be one on every corner. And after his dad, their dad convinced him not to talk to the President of the United States, that the President could not in fact assist with this topic, they directed their questions to evidently you and I both. And their recommendations was for future projects, should we decide to add any kind of statues? They would like to see the hedgehog.
Sonic hedgehog.
Sonic hedgehog and Princess Peach on the other. So. Okay.
They said something for Jesus on the.
Oh, something for Jesus on the other corner.
It was on a video that the.
Yes, they were. So we have some young people already trying to get involved in local politics for which we were very excited. So Sonic the Hedgehog and Princess Peach, just for your consideration.
I just worked them to make sure.
I would, that's exactly what I was doing too.
I did. It's a pressure to feed everybody more.
All right, anything else to come before the council?
Go vote.
Yes, go vote.
I already did.
Go vote. Yeah. All right. If, if there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Yes, moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same, that motion is carried. Rick, remember that, that's your, that'll be your first duty as a new councilperson. The newest guy has to make the motion to adjourn.
You can make that motion by earlier.
Yep.
By 10:30, Rick. No matter where we go.
Oh, Lord. I take it, oh, that's right, shit. Garrett had a doctor's appointment, didn't he?
All right, it's loading now.
All right. See you later, Dave. Enjoy Florida, and hopefully you don't get too wet. Are you flying or driving?
I knew it. I said, no.
By yourself?
Maybe, maybe he's getting foreclosed on.
I've heard of frequent runners.
Oh, boy.
He's got nothing substantial.
We put pressure on a page. I want to pay back.